This meeting should be called to order. It's October 26th. This is a special meeting of the Dayton Town Council. We'll do a roll call. Mark?
Here.
Stan?
Here.
Ron?
Here.
Carlin? And I'm here, so all five members are present. Only two things on the agenda. The first is the streets for the CCMG grant for 2024. That's coming up. We'll need to apply for it. So we need to get BFNS our preliminary street picks. So everybody has the Pacer rating. There's some changes from last year, obviously. The first two that are rated a one, those are Baker Farms. Those don't really exist, so you can basically ignore those. They don't exist yet. Dayton Road from the town limits to Baker Farms isn't in the town limits, so while that's a low rating, we could not get grant funding for it. And I don't know, like the county said, "Yeah, we're gonna do this," and then they never did. I don't know. Do you want to contact them again?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You want? Okay. So the next on the list are the two cul-de-sacs on Shady Lane that, if you remember, they weren't in our inventory and then they got put in our inventory. Those ones are obviously bad and need to be done, so those will for sure go on the list. And that will just be milling and paving. There's no sidewalks. Hind Drive is next, which this one's a bit confusing because it's hind drive, from hind drive to hind drive.
There's two of those and they don't mean, there's only two parts out of these four. Two of them crossed off. The hind drive to hind drive to Yost East and hind drive to Yost West.
Right.
Those are the only two that have the two that say industry.
Yeah.
That's the ones that
So these are four. So do we want to mill and pave hind drive? We had talked about this before because of the things that are all there, the development that might happen in the future.
I was thought, thought that we had them down as maintenance for this year.
Oh, we did.
But did that not happen? Is that not on what we had approved from the state?
We did do that, right? It was like up to Stoops Drive Way. But we didn't do the other way.
It was from Stoops Drive Way West that we had approved for maintenance, which would have been basically a slurry seal.
Yeah, that's right.
I remember last year before the slurry seal, people came in after, and so we'd need to check, but he might still be going to do it.
Yeah.
But, but I just want to look at it from Yost Drive going east to the cul-de-sac from McAllister. That, I don't know why that rating's a four because it really looks nice.
Yeah.
And it hadn't been that long ago, but going from Stoops, you add to Stoops Drive on down to the west, that means that slurry.
I'm almost sure that we have, that was our preservation for this year.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
So that should, so should be taken care of unless you just want to do going east.
It doesn't have, it doesn't need it. It does not raise your money.
Yeah.
Market Street?
That definitely needs it.
That was what was done several years ago with that super duper slurry stuff there. You could see all the cracks still there, and it really didn't improve the street that much, I don't think.
So you guys are talking mill and pave Market, right?
Yeah.
And sidewalks? Not all the sidewalks.
The sidewalks as needed.
Yeah.
It is same with the Rix's on that one.
So Market was, is broken up. The first one is Market from Main to Rix, and then the next one is Market from College to Main.
Yeah.
I don't know why they're not
Yeah, it seems like when they did the slurry, they did it all, both of those.
Delaware. Delaware from Main to Walnut and Delaware from Main all the way to the end of the street. So go ahead.
Well, I was just standing there giving, just checking.
Yeah. Same.
Delaware from the top of the hill down the weed, like last year, it's pretty good.
It is.
But from the hill going up to 38, it's not bad, but it could be done.
Like closest to 38 is like the bad part because there's actual cracks in the road? And it's just like at one small part and the rest of it is perfectly fine?
Yeah, I think.
Except on the edges, nearest the cemetery has like cracking. You know what I mean? So I don't know, I don't really understand how these are all rated because
I think those two are wrong. We could put, we're just picking out streets we could have to give a price and just take them off later.
Yeah, we could reevaluate those streets and look at them. But I previously, conversations I had with Mark a couple of years ago about, you know, doing a street, doing a portion of it and then leaving it, if we're gonna do a street, let's do the whole street, not just patch it here and there, you know, because then you got, you know, half done, half not done.
You can, so Delaware down there goes from 38 to Main Street, and then past Main Street is just down to
Good, definitely.
We are gearing.
Yeah.
And that's, so you're saying do all of it because that part going down the weed is not bad?
At least do from 38 to Main Street.
Yeah, 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 that whole stretch. Yeah.
Yeah, that, instead of just the bad part.
Right, right, right.
Well, we could look at that, see if you wanted to do a slurry too, and then in a couple of years do the whole or
I'm not even sure there's anything with slurry.
The slurry thing like they did on, on Market, you know, they told us that it would last, but I don't think it happens, and it's just
Okay, so we at least get a price and take it off.
Um.
That basically does, that the five, you know, there's no really need to do a six where you've got still a few more.
Yeah, there's a couple more fives, so we already talked about Rix, right? Yes.
That's the same way with Market. It's got all the cracks and it needs to be done.
So Rix from Market Street to South Street doesn't have any sidewalks though, right?
It just got the one along the church that they redid there on the side, so it doesn't have any other sidewalks.
All right. Conjunction from Walnut to South Street, that doesn't have sidewalks either, right?
Right.
All right.
And that's, it could be, you know, it's got quite a few cracks and stuff in it.
Main Street from Pennsylvania to Delaware and from Pennsylvania to Washington.
Okay. When I looked at, I know from Main Street to Washington, it definitely needs done. Main Street to Pennsylvania doesn't need done, but if you want it, you get a price and everybody looking at it, see what you guys think.
That's, I don't understand if it picks up on like the edges or something?
Well, there's a difference. And maybe years ago, when we, they did it on stands, they only did a part of it. You know, like when you go Main Street, that's a long street, and they did it block by block.
And I, you know, I know there from Conjunction to Washington, that was done not long ago because that was earlier that I brought to Mark's attention about it sinks, you know, when you drive through there. And that's what he investigated and found nothing to cause it. But it just had, you know, it's not gotten any worse, from my knowledge.
Well, you ought to look at those two blocks and see. One looks extremely nice and the other doesn't.
So do you want prices for both of them, and then we'll eliminate one if we're like, no, it doesn't add for that much?
That way everybody can look at it.
Everybody probably should have already looked at them, but
Go look at them, yes.
Okay, so then I feel like comes the real trouble because those were all of the five and unders, and then there is just an entire page of sixes. And sixes are pretty good.
I gotta read those.
Yep.
Okay, I was just over. Rix and Market Street and College, several years ago, where we got on, got that slurry. Okay, there sort of everything is taken out of order. I think of all the sixes that we can possibly afford it, the worst street under the slurry in this town of Dayton is College Street. And I've got all the pictures of those cracks before it was slurried on Market, College, and Rix, that anybody wants to see them. But it is terrible under there, and it's all coming through, just like Market Street. So we could possibly, if we're gonna do any six, it seems like we ought to get College out of there, and it's right by the school.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
You know, so
So let me ask you something. Does this, is this just for milling and paving? So the, the tar that they put down to fill the cracks, that's, that doesn't have anything to do with any of this?
It's supposed to extend the street five to six to seven years so you could go ahead and do other needed streets. It's a fill gap. And really that, those streets were on the list back years ago to get done before they put that, they were supposed to be done with the mill and pave. But then they went ahead, the last board put the slurry on it and for the stopgap. Now finally, all those cracks are coming through again.
So, but what is it that's called when they, when they seal the
Cracks?
Seal, crack seal. Okay, so that's, that's, that's not
Or that's a maintenance. Well, they crack sealed it before that, then they slurried it. So it's, the one time it was crack sealed, then it was slurried. The whole street was slurried on top of all the pavement.
Right, no, I'm not, I'm not disputing that road in particular, but, but, you know, I live in Washington and I, you can see where there's a lot of cracks, and I don't think it's from, from the road before, you know, where the cracks were. I think it's just, I think that road was done with an inch and a half when they did it. And I don't think the road needs to be done, but I think it probably needs to be crack sealed.
Well, that was something I was gonna bring up here in a minute. And the one place that I know needs to be done, as we paved last year on Cagle's Mill. And whenever you pave over concrete, every joint within that concrete, there will be a crack in the asphalt. Okay? And like Fifty Falls, when after they did that, we went back the following year and crack sealed all those cracks on Fifty Falls. You gotta prevent that water from getting out of those cracks or any of the asphalt. And that's one of the things that needs to be on here, is crack sealed Cagle's Mill.
So could that be part of this grant?
Yes, yes, yes.
Crack sealing, okay.
Yes. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Do you crack seal it or you can slurry?
It's just like a separate thing. It's called preservation instead of something else. Um, what about we didn't talk about conjunction, did we?
Yeah.
No, we just did conjunction from Walnut to South Street, but conjunction from Ohio Street to Meadow Lane. Did you want that one? It's not like the worst street ever, but I
We just, that's a conjunction last year.
We did this, like, um, like this side of the school conjunction. We didn't go
We did it. No, I don't
on the strip up there. It seems like that ought to be done. I know, we, we, on the other end of the conjunction, there's a lot of, it's been crack sealed before. I mean, I can see a lot of cracks sealed down there. I don't know if there's more cracks opening up or not. I just
Well, I'm just thinking if we wait to do that bit one, like another time, there's gonna be more of these sixes that
Get it done.
Get, we'll need also to do one. So like if we didn't have a lot of milling and paving that you know
So you're saying we need to pick a couple more?
Well, like obviously we need to pick the worst of the sixes.
But we don't know that this board puts the sixes in the order of
No, it, so it definitely doesn't.
Random.
It chose the sixes.
It puts a six if when that grew.
Well, how about if we get a, you know, you had in College Street, that's a long area there. That's, that's the widest street. So mill and pave, that's gonna be, yeah, a few price.
It's not long, yeah, but it's wide.
Yeah. It's covered lots. But, you know, maybe we'll have to.
I'd rather have them look at too many and then we take some away.
Right.
So you're looking to build, building up and getting College Street, Fall College Street? You would have a look at that?
College?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. That, that street needs done before any, before this. But then of the sixes, you know, I don't know. You could either pick the rest of conjunction and do that with the sidewalks matching or that was your thinking, so?
Um, or at least just to have them give us a price.
Give us a price, yeah. Then the whole thing relatively would be done with this. And on that
Yeah.
Will add to that cost.
Yes.
On conjunction?
On conjunction, yes.
So is that just Meadow Lane or?
Well, all of conjunction would be point three four minus.
There's a good bill on that.
All of conjunction.
That's what I'm saying.
Like the rest of conjunction, we didn't do all the way to Kingsville?
Yeah, to Kingsville.
Start where we've done it already and go all the way.
All the way up, right. Past Meadow.
At least get a price and then we can work.
Yeah.
So with that one, that might
Well I mean, did anybody see any others that were?
Well, I'll ask the county, because Stuart Klein said before, we split the cost on that. The part that's the member annex, the board member annex, so we split the cost, we pay that, or a little less than half they would pay, so we might want to get sometime we need to, the road's okay. It seems like trucks are gonna tear it up and sort of waste the paper. We need to be thinking about that sidewalk out there. There's a lot of people that go out there and they stop at the church, and then they walk on out to Baker's Farm. Some of them go in the road, some of them go in the grass. But we can't get grant money for that, but
Um, we can't get this grant money for that. But I'm hoping we can find some grant money because, so there's a sidewalk in front of Baker Farms and there's a sidewalk in front of the church. So it's just like a piece missing, and I'm hoping we can find something because it's like a, you know all the ADA stuff? Well, where it comes out?
Well, it comes out to the road, but not in front, in front.
But, but like there's a sidewalk here and a sidewalk here, they don't pack. Right? And so I'm hoping there's something, some ADA, some special exception that we can
So would they want to consider bringing that into the town?
Well, that's, the church is property. It's in front of, I understand that.
At some time, we could look at it, but you gotta
I don't know how you're gonna be granting money to do something that's not in town.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It wouldn't be this grant, but there might be other grants out there. Unrelated to CCMG, is what I'm hoping. Did anybody else see any other sixes that they thought needed attention? Either crack seal or
So are you gonna, are you gonna look at crack seal on Washington then?
Yeah, on Cagle's Mill.
Okay, let's move on.
Well, I think we got a pretty good list on that.
Yeah.
Well, run down, can we run down through it one, one more time?
Mm-hmm.
Start up there at the top.
So the ones are, they don't exist yet. The two is the one that we were just talking about that he's gonna call the county because that's not in town limit, so we couldn't get grants for that. Um, the next two are the cul-de-sacs on Shady Lane that just got into our inventory, so those will be done.
Definitely.
Mill and pave, no sidewalks.
The two portions of hind drive.
Mark, oh, yes. Hind drive, well, the one portion of hind drive, right? Because we just did the one, so it's just the hind drive.
You guys need to look at that, going east to the cul-de-sac. I don't think it needs a slurry or anything.
Yeah, I don't really
Because we did with the asphalt and we did Yost, we went around the corner forty, fifty foot to the first entrance to McAllister. And then from there on down, including the cul-de-sac, it's pretty nice.
Well, that was done when they redid the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, yeah, so you guys can look at it. It's pretty rough. It's a lot better than a lot of streets now.
It doesn't see a lot of traffic.
No, no. And so if they do the slurry like we thought they were gonna do going west, then we're okay with hind drive, basically.
Market?
Yep.
Mill and pave and the sidewalks that need to be redone. Delaware. That one we're going, like obviously the closest, the one closest to 38.
Main, main wall.
The other one we'll get a price for, but everybody should look, put a note to look at that one too because just like hind drive, I don't think that that one, I, I think we're gonna probably say, I don't think that needs to be done, but we'll get a price for it and everybody can look at that one also. Um, conjunction, we're getting a price for, mill and pave and sidewalks. And Rix. Mill and pave, no sidewalks.
That, that, the one you just went, conjunction from Walnut to south, there isn't a sidewalk.
Well, I mean, we're doing all of conjunction.
Yeah, okay, going north, yeah.
Yeah.
Sidewalks, yes.
Yeah. Sidewalks, obviously wherever sidewalks need to be done.
Right, right.
I'm gonna rip up perfectly good sidewalks or whatever. Um, did I say Rix? That doesn't have sidewalks. And then Main Street? Um, we're getting a price for both of these sections and sidewalks. Did I say that? And College Street, mill and pave. Those sidewalks are all open, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, they were all brand new when they did the slurry.
Yeah.
So those are good shit.
And crack seal prices for Washington and Cagle's Mill.
And then Conjunction Street?
Yeah, all of conjunction. All the conjunction we did already did.
Right.
Yeah.
Mark, when you were asking, I want to clarify something. You were asking about Dayton Road South. There's a part parts in our town, then it skips our town, then it's in our town again. Even if we annex that in tomorrow morning, we still can't, you can use the grant money for the chip seal, or I mean, for the resurfacing of it. You can't use it for any sidewalks because they're brand new. Those sidewalks down there, we're gonna have to get, we, the town's gonna pay for that.
Right.
So we can pay for it now, next year, or later when it's annexed. I'm just thinking that at some time we can look at all this, or maybe next year we'll want to put sidewalks down the Baker's Farm for a different reason because a lot of people are walking down.
Well, I think, I think that's a great idea, but I don't know that we want to do anything like that if it's not annexed into town. So
Well, I mean, I get what you're saying on one hand, but on the other hand, Baker Farms is.
I understand.
I think we gotta let everybody in there and think about if they want to be annexed too.
Well, and that, that would fall into it as well, is that such a thing as that we could go fifty fifty with the church, and the church pays for half of it. Sidewalks, Southern Republic, we could ask them to do it.
Well, before we do that, can we make sure we don't have any grants?
Yeah, yeah, do you have any grants first?
Yeah, that meeting will be coming up. Okay. Are we all good on the streets?
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the rating of Jefferson between Conjunction and Washington?
Jefferson.
Which is a continuation of College.
Washington to Ohio is a six.
Wait, what?
Washington, it's a six, College and, and Washington Street.
Jefferson Street between Conjunction and Washington.
There's a Jefferson between College and Washington that's a six. There's a Jefferson between Washington and Ohio that's a six. You guys see any others?
What's, what's the six rating? What house?
Six is what we were talking about, like they're pretty okay, but we've done all of our fours and thys.
I can tell you that that street, that section needs sidewalks. It needs it bad. The residents have been calling for sidewalks there because of the kids who walk on the middle of the street after school and are forced to.
Yeah, there's none there now, right?
There is none there now.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I mean, that's, at least get a sidewalk on one side or something.
But the thing is, we can't put in new sidewalks with this where none exist. So that's why we finally have a grant person, and that's high priority is to find
We can only repair it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Scott, Jefferson between, between, where is it again, please?
Between Conjunction and Washington.
Okay.
It's like if you go straight on College going east, you run, turns into Jefferson.
Is there, is there easement there for sidewalks to be put on? Or would we have to, would we have to purchase these?
Seems like all this utility runs out of
I mean, we could have to look at the what the, gee, thing that the county's got, where you can see how, why it shows compared to the street, you know? Ten feet on each side of the street or
Yeah, that means it, yes.
There's just like two houses there, right?
Yeah, but everybody walks around, there's a
No, no, I'm not saying because it shouldn't. I'm just saying like if we needed to do something, it wouldn't be like seventy-five people have to get on board with this.
There's six along there, four corner houses and one between each side.
Oh. A middle?
You know where Hangey is? On that way, there's a, a house that had a little fire in it, and the next corner is Dave Kramer's house. And then on the other north side, you got Hackey, Mariana Hackey.
Yeah.
House in between, and you got the next one.
Did I miss part of the conversation? Are you putting sidewalks on both sides? I was thinking just the
Just one side. Unless you get some kind of grant to base for them, but if we have to take it out of our pocket, you probably we need to at least get one sidewalk in town some. There's others that don't have either sidewalk on either side, so you want at least just do one for now. Unless there's some special close to school grant that you can get it all.
Right, safe to school or safe streets or
Then we could do it both.
I mean, but would that be necessary? And would that be
Yeah, the kids can walk up to the next corner and we'll use the sidewalks there.
Maybe, yeah, we can, okay.
If that's a busy street for kids, they come around there according to which way they come. Some go on the north side, some go on the south side. And walk over right in the middle of the street, so well, they did.
I know, I know. Okay. Was there anything else on the streets? Can you say your name and address to the ring?
Lovely, fifty Beavers, seven fifty-eight Main Street. Um, the section out there between
Um, the section out there between the church and Baker Farms, where they don't have a sidewalk, um, could there be a priority with that, since that's such a safety issue out there? I've seen families with kids and dogs trying to walk through there, and it's, I mean, it's, uh.
Yeah, they go, if they walk down so far, then there's no sidewalk.
Yeah, and, you know.
They wanna get out to Baker's Farm.
You can still tell that they're a little uneasy walking through there with their family and their dogs, and, yeah.
Well, why don't we talk to the church and see if they would do some sharing or something, or the grant people, or some kind of a grant for, no matter where you have a sidewalk.
Especially if they're doing base two out there too.
Right.
So, I don't know if it'd be possible or not, but if, if, if that land was brought into the town, and then made part of the allocation area for the redevelopment commission, then it might be monies from the redevelopment commission could use to, for infrastructure, you know, if that would be considered now. That all would have to be found out.
Yeah.
But, one deal, we have a funding option for that one too.
So, the answer's yes, but we don't know what route that will be.
And here's one thing we need to get, because this is set, set a price. You go on Dayton Road here, you cross over, from South Street, you cross over the road tracks. There's about fifteen foot of gravel, crushed stone, and then our sidewalk. Always, even three boards ago, we wanted to place that, put concrete in there.
Railroad too?
Yeah, and the railroad, remember years ago, I asked the railroad, they ate blacktop that had gone clear east, so that now, when you, when you walk on the sidewalk on the north side and walk across the tracks, you're walking from concrete to asphalt, and then when it gets on our side of that railroad, it becomes crushed stone for fifteen foot. So, that crushed stone is in our limit, it's not the railroad's property, it's part of this, but it needs, they were always gonna just frame it up for concrete, make it out of the old. We would crush stone, especially people who would be walking through the road, because it'd dip down. But it's something, people did, every time someone came down, we just asked them, and they don't know, it was a tremendous amount, I mean, it's fifteen foot of sidewalk. In the same token, if ever, you wanted to put a temporary walk out from the sidewalk of the church on out, all you'd have to do is go along and probably buy three triaxle loads, fifteen hundred dollars of crushed stone, take a tractor and level it four or five foot wide all the way out there in a straight line, and people could walk and go along there without pulling out, you could be a stock gap for a thousand to two thousand dollars, and then have a crushed stone sidewalk out there.
Like, if we know grants are coming, we're gonna take them via process?
Remember what Mark told us about the law on sidewalks along the road? If there's no curb, it has to be ten feet from the road.
Yeah, and the new, the new sidewalks are eleven foot, I think, that they put in along the church, go past the church, there. That, that's right, they're eleven foot, the ones from Shady Lane from West End Drive down to the tracks.
Depending on how accurate this beacon thing is that the county has, and that line gets closer to the road as you go further out, the easement.
I know, and a few years ago, when they ran it, I saw that, I told Mark.
Ron, that being.
I said, Mark, Mark, you gotta, in that company, you gotta site that down there. If, if you keep going the, the, the way you are, by the time you get to Baker's Farm, the sidewalk will be on the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, they'll, they'll be touching, and they, none of them caught it before. So, from where the sidewalk is, it's back far enough now, that they'll need to run a new, that road runs at a thirty-degree angle out to the country. So, they'll need to aim that sidewalk to seem just eleven foot from the road, use the road as an edge. Then when you get out to Baker's Farm, it's eleven foot back, you know? It's correctable, but when you site it now, it'll straight for a while, and then it'll have that thirty-degree angle. But I'm just saying, we might wanna consider crushed stone or something as a stock gap for a year or two, so, annexation, or everybody gets their heads together, or some kind of grant money, or whatever. Because it'd keep people off that Dayton Road, is what we're doing.
That sounds like that would be a really good idea.
Who's calling church? Oh, her. It's wrong there. I was gonna volunteer you if you did this, so, that's good. Alright, anything else with the streets? Okay. Next is approval of claims, we're just doing this because we are having a special meeting. We got these bills from, uh, Mark Jones, our IT guy, he got the server in, our new server. Oh, shoot. Anyway, there's two bills, he billed the labor and technical services as one, and then he billed the stuff, the components and the server and the software, all that as another. So, it still came out to the same amount that he quoted us, and, um, it was quite the ordeal. He was here the whole day doing it, so, but he still only charged fifteen hundred dollars for labor. So, I would move to approve the following invoices, invoice number two-three-five-two-four-two, dated ten twenty twenty twenty-three, for Alpha Business Technologies, the amount of five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. And invoice two-three-five-two-four-three, dated ten twenty twenty twenty-three, for Alpha Business Technologies, the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Second. Is that all?
Yup. Okay, there's been a motion made by myself and seconded by Mark, as I had a discussion before we vote. This was the original one. So, um, there's been a motion made by myself and seconded by Mark to approve these two invoices totaling six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. How do you vote, Mark?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so, we can pay. Okay, have we known the business before, so this meeting is adjourned, thank you.